Well, good. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, to the Market Venues and Comms Committee Meeting on this day, the 20th of March. Can we start with 774, Declarations of Any Disposable Curious Interest, please? Let's say that is none. 775, apologies for absence. I believe councillor Jefferson will be along as and when he can, so.
Sorry, Chair, just to note, I have to leave at half six, I'm afraid.
Okay.
Appreciate your thin on the ground, but I have to be somewhere else at seven.
Yeah, I was just checking, even with Chris and Massey.
Yeah, you're still at Ross, so.
I think that's unconscious.
Make sure you last till the end.
776, minutes of the last meeting. Any issues with that? Can we approve them? I think that's a yes. 777, the venues report. I'll hand over to you, David.
Yeah, okay, so this is a new agenda item that we're going to add to as a standard to each of the V and M meetings. So it just gives you an overview of what's been going on since the last one. So as you can see in the venues report, we've had, apart from our regulars, we've had quite a few additional hired events, band events, plays, et cetera, et cetera. So we kicked off the year with the Panto. That actually came in after. So they had the first weekend, the second weekend actually came in after our previous meeting. We've had the Taras at the beginning of February and various different plays and such like. So it's been a reasonable couple of months. As I said, in the unfortunately, we lost one of the nearby venues and they've asked whether they can hold extra sessions of Carnegie, which we're absolutely pleased to accommodate them for. So we usually have one every month, but now since our last meeting, we've already hosted five. So that's good. One of the things that I'd like to talk about is moving forward. Sam Freeman has joined us in terms of someone who's got a primary, their primary focus is to look at compliance, facility services, liaison with booking and hires, so actually having physical communication with them and making sure that their requirements are delivered. And one of the things that we're looking to do as from the 1st of April, which is our new financial year, is to analyse forward events. So we've already done the first of the planning sessions to look at where the holes are. So when we haven't, we've got gaps of hires, we can then look to try and pull events off the shelf like that, in eighties, nineties. And we can analyse what kind of events they are. So we've looked at it and basically they fall into four categories. So celebratory events, commercial events, performance events and community events. So the celebratory events, as they suggest, weddings, birthday parties, anniversaries, et cetera. The income derived from that is reasonably basic, so it's your basic hire fee, but it will also include bar income. And for those kind of events, the bar is from the moment they walk in to when they finish around midnight. So the bar income is, on celebratory events, a lot more lucrative than some of the others. The commercial events, we mean by that, or potential conferences, we're now developing a group of businesses that are regularly attending to hold training meetings, et cetera, primarily in the Guildhall Council Chamber. But again, that is a basic hire charge. There's not usually anything additional that we can generate income from. Performance events are things like tribute bands, comedy shows, et cetera. And that, again, is sometimes allowing you to have a lucrative bar event. This Friday, we've got Legends of Motown. Last year, the format of the show was basically 7:30 to 10 o'clock, I think, and then it finished. That was their hire and they dictated it. We've talked to them a lot over the last year and we've encouraged them to continue the activity, the event, until midnight. So once the show finishes, there'll be a DJ come down and sort of, so which means we can probably generate a lot more bar income from that kind of thing. So again, that's the advantage of Sam being a little bit more proactive in talking to the hires and making sure that we can sometimes have a play a part in trying to dictate the format to our advantage. Community events are things like job fairs, dance shows, U3A, you have a regular monthly meeting with us. But again, they are potentially just hiring come only. There's not a lot of scope to generate additional income. So what we're trying to do is look at those in those four different categories and then analyse what we actually need to try and improve our overall income generation for the year. Do we need 60% or 50% or 40% of those more lucrative celebratory events to make sure that we generate budget? And if we do, it's a decision maybe that committee makes that we actually have to enforce that. But be mindful that we are a community venue and we do have to support those kind of community events, even though they don't generate the income that we may wish. So that's the kind of work that we're going to be doing. And in the future, coming to committee, we will be able to give a more fuller interpretation of our performance and budget. So I know committee have talked in the past of not just talking about gross income, but actually what does it mean in terms of staff costs? Have we potential to generate a future income? Maybe we need a little bit of investment to do that. So we can have more pertinent conversations around how we develop in the future. So I don't know whether you've got any questions on that?
Just basically, when this sort of evaluation's done, will we be able to sort of see a breakdown of where it is and, you know, where we put capacity, have some input on?
Yeah.
You know, there might be an idea of what we could do and sort of M and E nights free and things like that.
Absolutely. So we are looking to evaluate where we are each month so we can find those gaps. You certainly, we can certainly copy you in as a committee to those findings. But bi-monthly, when we have these meetings, in this agenda item, as I say, it will be a standard agenda item. We, I can report back in a more fuller degree than just what I've explained.
That's brilliant. Because one of the things I was going to bring up, sorry.
Don't carry on.
One of the things I was going to bring up today was that we, we don't seem to get feedback from, what are we doing? We get what's gone on.
Yeah, yeah.
And we get, I don't want this to sound like it's criticism, because one of the things I'm mindful of is we've got some fantastic staff. Right? And I don't want to pee anyone off because they do work hard. And everyone's stood going over and above because of the situation we've been in short. But we don't get information. And right from the very first meeting we had here.
Yeah.
When we had the weather spoons scenario, one of the things I said was, we don't have information. We don't get information. We don't know what the history is. We don't know what the future plan is. We don't know what the delivery is. We don't know the result. And if we're going to be effective in, as a council, and giving direction to use, because you do the work, you do all the hard work, we just make a decision. We don't know if that's being delivered as we would like and we don't get a report back to say what's happened. And I feel that that then feeds into, I don't have the information. So when it comes to another decision, I don't know if I can make a decision on it because I've got any information.
Yeah. So, so again, going forward, within this agenda item, Vic, you will have a full scenario. So rather than me just reel off a number of events that we've had, that will be in a templated, standardised format that shows how much it generated, that's the gross income. Where did we get some additional sales from? So bar, in the case of wedding receptions, the fact that we charge to to put chair covers on, table covers and things like that. And then what sessional staff were used? So we can get a fuller net income picture for you councillors to set, because when you look at the budget.
I thought that, that's a good thing. It's something I'd like to see cross over into other areas.
I think it's going to happen. And, and I know, and you know, I'm looking to my left and the councillor sitting to my left has been banging on about this for ages. When you look at the budget, it actually gives you a gross income against bar and things like that. It does give you a overall gross expenditure for bar purchase, for instance. But what this will show is, is expenditure pertinent to that particular event? So we will see a better net figure. So when, so when I come to a committee meeting in the future and say, look, we've got an opportunity now to develop conferencing, for instance, but what that's going to take is a little bit of investment, maybe to buy some equipment and things. You're going to be able to make that decision based on a more accurate picture of what that can generate and actually what it can net. And that's the more important thing.
That's great. That is important, thank you.
Yeah, mine's not a question, just observation regarding the, Ben, next Friday, for the internal hotel.
This Friday.
Yeah, this Friday, yeah. I mean, we've obviously learned from what happened last time.
Yeah.
We, we, you know, we shut in the bar, you get people going and injured because everything finished at night, so they couldn't get a drink. But it's really good that we've taken note.
So in that scenario, over a year ago, 14 months ago, they basically hired the venue. It was their format that they delivered. What we're doing now is, yes, we'll take the hire, we'll look at that, does it fall into a category where we have an influence? Yeah, we provide the bar. Does it work for us? So can we talk to the people? Can we communicate with them and suggest? The, I mean, that, that, that event, there was 131 that attended. We've capped it 181, so there are 50 more sales for them for the, for the night. We've capped it simply because we've also had a conversation about these, this is the kind of event where these guys want to come along. They want to enjoy the night, they want to have a drink throughout the night and they want to dance as well. So you can't go any more than 180. But when you say, look, actually, we've recreated a different format which suits everybody. It's going to generate a bigger income in the bar for us, but you've just had 50 extra sales than you did 14 months ago. So at this moment in time, it's a win-win. We've got to deliver a good event, yeah. So let's not, you know, jinx it. But everybody is looking forward to a really good night and they're very pleased. And that is because we are having more fuller conversations with our hires and that's Tesla to Sam. We've got the ability now with her on board to do that, whereas in the past, we've had, well, we've had other members of the team, but they've been pulled from pillar to post. So, you know, that is her primary focus, with hires and try and maximise that type of potential. And we will sit down and do the planning exercise and bring a more fuller analysis report to committee in the future. Can I also say, one of the other things, which is not in the, in the venues report, one of the other things that we are doing, and again, learning from some of the mistakes, we're also, Sam and I, looking at developing our SOPs, our standard operating procedures. So when people work behind the bar, they're standard that we have to adhere to. So there will be a formulated preparation process, appearance for staff. So again, we've got the uniforms on side now, so there's no excuse. People will have to wear staff badges, so people are aware of who they are. There is a process of how we serve. So again, we've been looking at how can we maximise those events. We are now looking at workstations. There's a little bit of work to do on that because work in that bar, it's not changed. It's still quite a tight space. You can't get any more than three people to actually serve. But can we, can we do it in a better way than we've done before? And we think that we've looked at it and we can improve it. There's a lot more improvements that's got to be made, but that's an ongoing challenge for us. But again, we're looking at all aspects of what we do in terms of putting them into standard operating procedures. So when we have a churn of staff, as you will do, they will come in and they will pick up that standard and that's what they work to and that's what they're judged against. So if in the, if in the future, we get some disgruntled customers, we measure it against something that's the standard. If it, if it doesn't, then there's a reason and there's a consequence to that. So I think, again, we've looked at it from a more professional angle.
Thank you, David. Terry. I'm really pleased to hear about standard operating procedures. I mean, that's really crucial and consistency. And I follow your service across the board. There's, you know, quite a lot of variation depending who's there. So really pleased. And is that going to come back to committee at a later date?
I mean, we are working through those, Terry. Sam's on holiday this week, I've got a few days next week. So, but again, it's something that we will bring back to committee or you will have sight of it before. And maybe we can make, you know, adjustments as suggested at the committee. So you'll get prior, you'll get a prior look at that.
And one thing, it's more venue related than building related, but one of my bugbears is when the event is nearing an end but hasn't finished and people start packing up and almost practically sort of hurry people out the door. I did chuckers in Swartham last week and there was a guy literally speaking on the microphone and the venues team were putting the tables down behind him. And I was like, it was just really awkward. Like, ow, you know, hurry up. And I've heard constantly that, you know, we've done similar here. But if we could build into our standard operating procedures, you know, we make sure people book half an hour after it's supposed to finish to allow clear down. You don't start clearing down until it's finished.
So one of the things is for a bar event, for instance, the bar has to finish half an hour before the end of the event. So it's not like the staff can't get ahead.
Yeah.
So there's not something that they can't do. So one, they can catch up and they two, they can start closing down and cleaning the bar before they move in to clearing down furniture and things like that. But again, that will be highlighted at the process. I mean, I must admit, after retiring Dave Terry, I will, I will admit that I have been one of those people that's done it.
I've done it myself.
So, but, but we've got to have something that we can, we can consistently operate to. And this is what we've decided to do.
Hey, more from the floor? If not, I've got a couple of questions. The first one relates to Carnegie.
Yeah.
We've got a full council next week with the threat of further disruption. Would it be possible to test the microphones properly and give a report to councillors, sell off and use them? Because last time we sort of went in cold and it was a bit of a fiasco really with the microphones. Nobody knew how to use them and so forth.
So one thing I do have to do, sorry.
No, no, I'll take responsibility for that. We'll ensure that doesn't happen again.
And, and but can I, can I, I mean, I appreciate that, Alan, but, but, but I will have to say that we have, we have purchased a mic for every councillor and there wasn't 18, 17, I think we've got 17 councillors. There wasn't 17 microphones on there. The one thing it does do though, is it does compromise the full council protocol. I think Alan may have spoken about that in a previous meeting.
We've had a look at that.
Yeah.
And understanding orders. If the chair, i.e. the mayor, says at the start, the councillors are allowed to sit down, then that's what they're allowed to do.
Okay. What I think though is with, with respect, I think because there were times when councillors shared minds, it wasn't directly in front of them. So we will test standing directly in front. So what will happen is you will have your, a bit like your roads, you will have your individual mic. And on the base, there will be a label that says this particular councillor's name. And more importantly, because we heard every word, or I heard every word you said, because you speak well and, you know, other, other councillors, I won't name anyone, but maybe a little bit more timid in their speech. But what we're going to do is we'll test and if you need volume five, because you project your voice a bit more, someone else might need volume nine and it will be on there. So, so you will know that, again, it's going to have to be councillors' responsibility as well to make sure that that's not been twisted. The problem is when certain individuals did what they did, they did touch the mics. So it will be that if ever that happens again, you need to know if I am David Brooks and I need nine, I will make sure it's on nine.
I think it would be useful to know how far away people have got to be to talk into the mic. Because, you know, personally, I was, you know, I'll talk about me. I was sitting at my normal stance at the table. Nobody could hear me.
No. So I think what we need to do and, and, well, I don't want to dwell on too much of what might happen. But councillors do arrive early. So the first thing we'll do this time is you will sit at your, your desk with your individual mic and we'll, we'll make sure that we monitor what, what sound level you need and then we'll record it. So I think, so yeah, I do apologise that we didn't have enough training, but I think it was, the issue was exacerbated because you shared mics. We have enough to have individual mics. That's what will be on the table in the future. But I think it will just help a little bit more if we can relax the protocol and sit. Again, you know, no disrespect, Chris, but if you are not somebody really that you sit with, with Stuart, I can hear anything you said as well. So I think that will help. I think that will help just being there in front of your mic. So hopefully that.
Yeah, thank you.
As long as what I, what I stress is that you keep in contact with councillors and let them know before the event what they need to do.
Yeah.
Now.
Is there some sort of kill switch or microphone, like dead button? Because I have many, an image of someone in the crowd grabbing the mic and turning it into.
So when you, see, this is why it's not, in my opinion, and I've discussed this with Alan. The chair, i.e. the mayor, will know who is speaking because the mic stands red when it's live. But you, you control that. So when you speak, you turn it on and when you don't, you turn it off. There is an override that the mayor, the, the chair of the meeting can override that and kill that mic, just in case you forget. So unless they grab the person who's speaking at that particular time, then, then I don't think that's necessarily going to be an issue. Once everybody realises how to use the equipment.
Okay. The other question I have is regarding, again, the Carnegie. In the manifesto, we spoke about turning Carnegie into a charitable venue. Are preparations underway for that process?
I think the difficulty for us is really understanding what the framework will be. So literally have to start a process of doing that. And I think it'll just be a matter of sitting down, do some modeling. And it might be easier to do that possibly in a workshop format where we can play around with it and then do that. And I think that's really, it's one of these situations, we don't want to step outside, but everyone understands.
I, I do understand that.
You want us to do something, but we're not sure of the actual work. If we've tried that, 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 and again, I will take responsibility for facilitating that.
Thank you very much. Could I just say something from, from the venue team members? You know, we're, we're not, you know, the venue team are not unintelligent people and they have, they have seen budgets and those budgets are a six month budget for, for the venues. So technically, at the end of September, there is no budget going forward. So, so I think the team would welcome that dialogue and have that conversation about, you know, where it is going to go for various different reasons. So, but yeah, we understand that's the process and that's, that's your pledge. And, and the budget dictates that's the direction we're going to go.
That's what I'll comment on that. Because when it first got mooted that this is a way that we could look at doing it, I was quite empty, if I want to put a word on it, because I didn't know what it entailed. I've since done a little bit of homework and I actually think it's a positive move to put it in there because it was, A, save the council a lot of money in valuable value. But it gives you more freedom to do what you need to do. And I can't see that there's anything negative there. Obviously, I'm not an expert and I think a workshop would be really good because then we can all fresh it out. It gives casters the confidence to promote it. It gives the staff the confidence that we ain't after their jobs because we're not from it. So I think it's a win-win.
Well, can I just, I won't share, I won't share the individual that I had a conversation with. You can imagine that we've had conversations internally within the team. And I think, to be honest, from something that was creating real angst in the team, again, they've tried to delve into, you know, where, where could that be? And I'll give you an example. We have an issue with our SAP system. It's 12 years old and, you know, sticks will be approached as well. It's 12 years old. It was, it was installed before I came. So that's how old it is. And there's one or two repairs that need to be made. Now, there is a fund that we could possibly access that may be able to purchase the replacement of some of that equipment. They will not fund the town council. We've also had a conversation with someone that we could go into, could partnership with in terms of delivering creative type events and things like that. And with respect, they are not keen to get involved with a town council because they are a community organisation and arts community organisation themselves. But again, it opens up a lot more doors. Some of the stuff that I've mentioned in the report talks about partnerships. And again, we've had conversations with a creative, a group that works with hard to reach youths and things like that. And again, they do a lot of work and they're, they're, they're looking to do a lot of work with us. But I think, again, it will be beneficial to both parties, again, if we are not seen as a town council. Having said that, the staff are very keen to have some kind of connection to the council for obvious reasons. So I think dialogue, I think dialogue will be good, Vic. I think, you know, and sooner we do it, the better. Because, you know, we seem to fly past.
It won't be next week, though, won't it?
No, it won't be. We seem to fly past and, you know, it's the beginning of the financial year and we have a six month budget. Six months will go quickly and we'll be really busy. So we need, we need to try and, you know, have that dialogue.
Terry. I think that's a really helpful question, conversation. And there's lots of different delivery models for community venues. You know, we, we know some of them as council, but there's lots more out there. I think as a starter, I'm really keen for staff and councillors to have an arranged visit to DISC or an exchange. We've spoken about this before. Yeah. And the model in DISC works really well for the reasons that Vic mentioned, but also the reasons that David mentioned is because funders will not fund the town council. Because if you look at our reserves and the size of the council, we will not get loss refunding, we will not get arts council type funding. And the model they got in DISC, they, you know, they got millions of pounds by adopting a different delivery model where the building is still owned by DISC Town Council, but the delivery is run by other people. And that's the sort of model that I would like to go down. And also, why should we as a town council be sat dictating what happens in the buildings? You know, I would rather have people on the managing committee for the Guildhall Carnegie that actually know about arts and drama and all the rest of it. And they can shape the programme. That's really what it's about. Yes, of course, we have an input as a town council because I'm sure we've got ideas. If we want it to be a leading arts and cultural venue, and I think we do, we need to bring those people in with the expertise that can help guide and shape something. And that's certainly the sort of direction I want to go. So to begin with, a visit to them would be really useful.
Can we have that meditated as an action point, please? So, so as we get on with this, because we've spoken about it.
Yeah, and David's. Thank you. But it's going to be, it's going to be a journey for, for councillors and staff because we, I, you know, we've all got ideas as councillors. I've got some ideas, but nothing set in stone. Yeah, I think that's the key thing. It's a vision for moving forward, which we need to do together. But that's the direction of travel.
Thank you. Moving on to 778, Communications Report. I guess this is going to be you and I.
It is indeed. All right, same. So looking at our social media, stats and everything still staying positive. You should have all had this report, well, as part of the pack. And we are obviously using Instagram, Facebook and X. I know Instagram was mentioned last time. The page was set up. We're just making sure we're using it a bit more effectively and requested. Our engagement on the TTC page was 20.7% with a post reach of 35,000 in the last, when did I quit? It's a Friday. So the last four, five days, we have hit 65,000 reach because of the action on our posts. Lots of positive stuff going up. Carnegie and Guildhall engagement is at 14.9% as well. So that's still positive. I want to push that up a bit more because it is, has dwindled slightly. But I think with some of the events and things we've got coming up, it's just about getting the campaigns behind the big summer events that are heading into Bedford. You've obviously got the stats there for the Instagram pages and how many followers we have. Numbers are low on Instagram. We are pushing it out. We have got QR codes up in the centres. We have, we do link to it on the website and our newsletters. So it's just to continue doing that. So it's just to continue doing that and maybe looking at our events and whether we if we have kind of more target audiences there with younger ages and things, maybe suggesting they follow us on Instagram as well. Free town councils, not just for the older generations. We're also working on more real content which help engage wide audiences. We've got a really good post out the other day. The people that cut back Castle Mound did a drone video for us. They weren't sure if they were allowed to. It was quite funny. We did, we had said previously the kid, but and they have all the licenses before anyone questions that. But they did the videos and sent them over to Nick as a bit of a surprise. It was quite nice to get that because of the before and after shots. It just instantly gives people the, you know, view that we're doing things. And it's nice, you know, the scenery is nice and it's nice to celebrate good things in Bedford. And hopefully that goes out a bit further and people might want to come and visit. Twitter slash X is about the same. We've got a higher following on the TTC pages. I think that's probably because more conversation goes on on there. Behind the posters and things like that from the Carnegie one. And we do snapshots of events, but I think with TTC one, it's more you know, hot topic on what's happening and getting people linked in particularly with councillors and things at the moment. Bedford Markets page has been launched on Twitter as requested. I sat down and stayed and did that this week. That was slightly delayed because holidays and things like that, but we got it off to a start this week and we're hoping to work together to try and train Stacey on using it because she's not very she doesn't have much practice. So I've said I'll go through some bits with her for a post and just support her on that and try and get that up and running and get some more engagement on that. Offline, we're continuing with our poster sites, poster packs. I did say they will be given out of V and M. I completely forgot to pick them up off my desk. I do apologise, but I will make sure that they are in Queen's House. And I did note that someone brought it up at another meeting. Because I'd only brought them into V and M and I, my brain doesn't think why didn't that necessarily?
I suppose at that time it was probably full council.
Yeah, so my thought process is either to drop them off at full council or to just leave some packs here so that if other people pop in, they can grab them. Yeah. And I know we do use this for other meetings as well. So it'd be good for people to have that. But I do note that and I will do that going forward. Might even name them. So I know if you picked up. Community groups are also out distributing the packs for us. They're starting to build a group list. I'm also talking to a few other people I know do ask me for posters and bits and pieces. And I'm trying to collate a list so we can see if there are gaps around the town centre that we can fill. I think we do catch most places now, but it's just about keeping that up and keeping that momentum going. We're drafting a list of town events which will be sent through to other councils in the area. Whether they choose to share them or not, I'm not sure. I have had conversations with Swartham and Watten. I have sent a message to Darren. I can't off the top of my head tell you if I've heard back from them yet. But I will continue those dialogues and just try and get them to share bits and pieces because if it's things like D-Day and national events, they are hopefully more likely to share them if we can kind of don't clash dates and things like that. Again, continue contact with Nate, with Breckland, working quite well with them and Norfolk as well. I've been using Emma Crampton quite well in between the two of us. Grabbing her when I've got anything about Breckland and going, can you give us a little help here and push this out? Particularly with things like the litter pick. I know that, you know, some of the councillors have volunteered a, so I suggest maybe they want to come and join us on that and support the town. So it's just trying to get that information across the three tiers and to get it out as many residents as possible so that people don't feel like Norfolk, Breckland or us are missing anyone within the areas. Press releases are very prominent. We have produced six, I've put here, I think might be seven now. For since the end of January, we've got two more currently in the drafting stages, ready to go out in the next few weeks and just finishing those off. All of them have been picked up so far and shared, if not by one, but by multiple media, whether that's contact, whether that's online or in print, which is great. And we're hoping to keep that up. We've got quite a few bits coming up with off the back of some of those. So it's not just a case of putting the press release out. So we've put the press release out about the challenge grazers. And obviously, going forward, we will continue that conversation with them. I know me and Terry had a conversation about filming lambs. Going on to the park. I went and spoke to the grazer and he is very happy to abide with that. He thought that was quite funny. So it's not a case of we put a press release out because we've done something and now that's put on the shelf. It's, you know, we've got the nest boxes that have gone up. So we're continuing the work with Hazel and Iron going forward and we put more posts up that. So we said we were going to do this and we have done it because it's important to show people that and to be important to obviously make things sustainable. Been working hard to speak to councillors about topics they're passionate about. For example, Hazel and Iron about bird boxes, Terry about his sheep. And keeping those stories going where possible. It's great to share things to councillors when councillors work in country towards town, but it would be great to have more good news stories. I know lots of you do lots of things. People probably aren't aware of how much you are out and about. It would be nice to share your particular interests because then people will know who to go to if they're not sure about different things. You know, if you're, for example, passionate about the D-Day celebrations and things, I know we've mentioned some. It would be great for people to know that that's the person to go to. I know Stuart's very hot on his heritage and, you know, I know a few of them, but it's just building that for my benefit. So I know who to go to for press releases, but also for your benefit and showing people what you, you know, what you are contributing to their town. Digital newsletter went out this month with updates for events. And also for our calls for our volunteers for the big spring planting and big litter picks. The spring planting was brilliant. We had lots of people come and get involved. We had lots of conversations in the town centre with people going past. I think we worked to quell a few of those worries when people were saying, well, you know, they might get pulled up and things like that. We said, well, we hope not. Because if people are getting involved in it and, you know, you're seeing that they're good, that you will help support that. And we have had unfortunately, we did have a few pulled up, but we got an instant report from someone and then they followed that up by reporting it themselves. So that was dealt with very quickly and they've been okay since. So hopefully that will continue. In terms of the big litter pick. We have, I know that some of the groups in Bedford have been doing one, but we've got one on Friday and Saturday from ten AM, twelve PM on the marketplace. We are encouraging councillors to come along, get involved. If any of you are around, it would be great for you to be seen out and about with us and just to come and chat to staff and people that are getting involved. Because I know people who were getting involved were very passionate about helping and they really want to get involved. And whilst we're doing that, we will be encouraging newsletter sign up. So everyone that comes will be giving us their name. And as long as they have to do their name and and on emergency contact, just in case there's any issues to cover us. But we're also going to ask them if they were happy to, if they provide an email to add to the newsletter list so they know if things are going forward. So, yeah, and the printed one, I believe we are going to go on to in a bit, but it is being drafted to be sent out.
Thank you very much. I'm very confident. Strong feeling that you're really leaning into the whole idea of press releases.
Yes.
And I, and I, um, my view is it's really paying off actually. It's really effective.
Cherry. Yeah, I commented that I'm going to run away. You used the word momentum in there, Hazel, which I think is really relevant because actually there does feel like there's momentum with comms, which is down to you. So, you know, thank you for that. It's been really positive the last few months, not just on social media as well, actually, which I'm really pleased about. Because the hit rate with press releases being covered, I did chuckle when the EDP ran the same story twice in the same newspaper. Which, yeah. So once it's actually the next day, then I start going. It's that good. They put it in twice on the same day. But no, and I think, you know, taking good quality photos, just, you know, smiley children, people planting stuff, it just makes such a difference. And we're in print media and, you know, through that, we are changing people's image of Bedford because there is positive stuff that's going on. It's not all doom and gloom. And so it's so important and that.
Any questions? Any further? Okay, thank you. Seven seven nine, Bedford Town Newsletter.
I'll start it off and then if you want to finish it. So basically, in December, I did produce and send out a production timeline. The first element of that was to come in, come to the V and M in January, which we did just to try and chat through as per media policy dictates what potential content will be within the newsletter. We got over that patch. So then it was a case of actually trying to get it together. Pretty much most of that has been done. One of the areas that we have had an issue with is the participatory budget project or programme. And there's been obviously some extensions. And they're still in in the realms of trying to create the format for the presentation of those organisations that are pitch for a slice of the pie. So unfortunately, it has has put us back across that production deadline. We have to make a decision whether we're going to go with that or we're going to ditch it. Because there are topics within the potential newsletter that talks about mayor making, there's interviews with the incoming mayor. If we push it back too far, that becomes irrelevant as well. So we might have to look for another article to finish that publication off. It's, we were hoping it was going to drop on the doormats on the second of April. But it's likely to be the following weekend, which means we're saving plenty of time to advertise annual town media, mayor making and the and the list of town events. But it will take that last major push to get that final article so we can get it professionally laid up and printed. But yeah, I think we're in a better place than really. It's it seems a bit you know, anxious, but we're in a better place than we was issued one. So we learned some of that and we're nearly there.
Thank you, Vic.
With the participatory budget, and obviously it's going to be in the newsletter when you presented it as, you know, fairly complete. Could we not had that with saying due to the overwhelming number of applications?
We can certainly do an article.
The timeline is going to slip?
Yeah. We, sorry.
Yeah, I think I think the issue with participatory budget is getting hold of managers just left that.
Would that be, would that be fair comment?
Potentially, yeah. So obviously, I've spoke to you about this yesterday and I've given you the stuff we've got so far, just to get it all checked over and is you happy with it? Obviously, I hold my hands up. It dropped a week behind. I did end up with Covid. Didn't plan on having it a third time. But that knocked me out for a week, which meant obviously that's then pushed our deadlines for a week. And we have had a heavy focus on the getting the spring planting and litter picking out because that was time sensitive. So that has taken up a bit of my time. But yeah, we've done the meetings with both the, or I've done the both the interviews with the incoming mayor and the outgoing mayor. And they were quite happy to eventually give me some information. It's like but yeah, in terms of the participatory budget, I spoke to Terry and had a conversation about he wanted a big double spread, he's paid spreading it, wants to advertise the next steps in it and go forward from there. But the problem with that is obviously on the Tuesday, that he was meant to then speak to me about it. You had your meeting and a decision at that point hadn't been made. I don't know if it has since then. So I do apologise if it has. But so I think the problem there was it was, I was reached on Tuesday and then because it got bumped, understandably, it was absolutely fine. And the other thing was the set in bloom, how much we want to put in it. I've done a quick draft of some of it, but we have got, I've got a bank of obviously, I've got our seven or six press releases we've already put out. I've potentially got two more coming up. I have a bank of things we could put in, but it's whether we want to use the padding out as such or whether we have other stuff we could put in. We're happy to, but it's just getting to this tight deadline now. But I think we had quite a good conversation about it yesterday.
To be, to be fair, it would have been lovely to drop on ten thousand doormats with that in the centre spread. But this is such a big programme, it's such a big thing that the council have taken a lead on. But when it does materialise with with the full format of the presentation night and things like that, we are going to make a huge press release coverage. We're going to go. And it doesn't mean to say that we can't send a digital newsletter out. That's got subscribers over over a thousand for the digital newsletter. So that will get to those kind of people. Press releases, social media, we'll still make a big hit on it and it will get out there.
Thank you. Any further comments on that? No, just a reiterate, my thanks to you for that. Oh, well, you've been thrown at it. Seven eight oh, Bedford Town Council website.
So this has been, you know, littered with setbacks. We did, we did pretty much launch on the date that we were going, but again, it was beset with teething problems. We had issues with whether it was compliant to various different platforms, Firepox being one of them. And then the booking system, there were issues. It is, again, you know, this is something that Hazel's been working tirelessly to to try and get amended and, and, you know, full credit to her for sticking at it because honestly, it was hair tearing times that we but we think that we're pretty much there in terms of where we wanted to be at launch date. Yes, there is now the next step, which is how do we make it a lot more interesting and populate it and make those pages even more interesting and attractive? That was always the next step. The one thing that is also really important that we need to do is a cleansing programme of getting rid of all that useless archive documents that are out to date, policies that are not not relevant anymore. And that's going to be a huge task. And I think what this committee did suggest is let's get the documentation as of the first of April last year. If people are looking back retrospectively to check decisions and things like that, they're likely to go back over the last few meetings since the year turned. So that's our first step to make sure that that's all on the website and relevant. But again, we do need to create an archive page dump folder, whatever you want to call it, where we can get those relevant documents for people who really want to research into various different decisions from from past meetings. So there's a huge task to go forward. So it was never going to be there finished and all singing and all dancing on the thirty first. But I think now we have got what we wanted on the thirty first. Booking system work by and large. What I can say is we did install a hard copy paper booking system. And I and I'm very confident that we didn't miss any bookings during that time. So again, we didn't miss out on anything. But but honestly, it's been a real grind. And again, full up, full credit to Hazel for sticking with it. And what we now need to do, and this is something that again, I would suggest there is an action coming from this committee. It's for me to make sure that we get the right support package. I think it's been a, as it's turned out. I am going to say this, probably I shouldn't say this in a public meeting, but I think it's been a step to half the web designers. And I think what they've offered us now is not something that they offered us at the outset of the brief. There is a three tier support package, bronze, silver and gold. And the one that they've sent through to Alan and I is a bronze package, which is the minimum level of support. That's not good enough. We agreed and paid, we suggested that we wanted to pay for the gold package. The reason we wanted the gold package actually because it was quite a lucrative sum of money that would have saved what we previously have. So that was financially beneficial to us. But I think they realise now it's a step too far. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make sure that they either adhere to the original brief. It's an open source WordPress website. It doesn't necessarily have to be supported by them to be supported by anybody. That's the reason we went with an open source website. So we, if they refuse to do that and admit that it's a step too far, what it does allow us to do is to source maybe some local support, which will be a lot better for us because you can have that local dialogue with people. They can pop in and physically sit down with with staff and things like that. So that's what we will do. So I'm I'm happy, Cherry. If that's one of the tasks and actions that come out of this meeting to finally secure a a support package that's going to work for us because
I've I've got some thoughts on that, but I'll I'll throw it to the floor first if if that's okay. Anybody any comments on that?
I just think that we do need to have an effective support package, which whether it's them or someone else. Myself personally, I wouldn't know one end of a support package to the other. All right. So that's not my expertise. Completely novice in going on it. All I want to do is be able to go on there, see what I want to find and so it's got to be foolproof because I'm a fool when it comes to that. But the support package is essential because the last one we need is we're we're putting out, we're professional outfit with a nice new website. And it keeps collapsing.
So to be fair, Vic, the previous website was too cumbersome to navigate and things like that. So the website format is a lot cleaner and and easier to navigate. What wasn't What wasn't in dispute was the support package we we got from the previous web provider. So we have a standard that we can hold the current web designer too, because we were happy with the support package. We never had a problem with that. So we've got something that we can, you know.
We've got a benchmark, I think. Yeah. So if nobody else has got any comments, I've got two questions really. Do we have a contract with iCloud and what does it look like?
The contract was to supply the website that they've actually built. The support package was the bolt one. So they could actually get out of the support package if they don't really want.
Can we get out of the support?
Absolutely.
Right, that's good because that leads me to my second question, which is. I've I've sort of looked at this in the round and it seems to me that we've spent an awful lot of money on a not particularly good package from iCloud. My suggestion would be that we get someone in and look at somebody else that offer that support package. I think we could save a lot of money. Certainly, there are local people who would do it. I could get names and addresses. Yeah, I thought you'd come in.
I I think there's two elements that we also learnt a little bit. There's the data element, which is which is under our control. And I think getting those right, the naming protocols, getting the archive done, that's up to us. Doesn't matter who we have posting, if you know. And the second part is to get that support. And I think, you know, David, I had beat the discussion this morning. We've got to have that support, you know, and if they're not prepared to do it, well, then we go somewhere else who is prepared to it. And, you know, we can't go to a stage where, you know, I mean, I had to write to the MD. And I don't even think I can add any response because it it just didn't happen. It was as if we, you know, we were the problem. And that's not the not the not the case.
That's unacceptable, really.
So I think we really have, you know, we had a discussion last night at the financial personnel meeting about how we change the financial regs. To get some of those monitoring things in. And I think we need to look at it for this particular contract going forward as well.
Yeah. Yeah, Carla.
I tend to agree. I mean, we need a fully functional app today, up to the current times website. That was that was a priority, you know, everything is online. We need something that is really user friendly, that it works, that doesn't collapse like. So if if I'm a bit confused about when when the support package was agreed together with the website, with building that website, with this current provider, right? And then I want to change that contract or is it something wasn't discussed? So I'm just a bit uncertain what where does this stand?
So when we when we. Affree for the web designer, it was on the design and build of the website. They have a, as I said, they have a suite of bronze, silver and gold packages that you can bolt on. But what we did is we paid for the design of the website. And we 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 suggested that the package that we would have once that was built was the gold package. One, because it saved us a lot of money, but it it was supposed to deliver the all singing, all dancing technical support. I think because we have been so pushy in terms of wanting to get our website right. I think they're going, well, actually, we'll offer you the bronze package, which is the very basic. That's not good enough. It's not good enough because we don't have the expertise in house to do it.
Yeah.
And we don't need that because luckily, what we have built and we built this preview with the previous website. It's a WordPress open source website. So it's owned by us. It's our website. It's not a bespoke licensed website. It's ours. So we can go and source technical support. And it will be easy for them to facilitate that with anybody. We're not obliged to go with them.
But they they actually agreeing please that once the website revision was done, that they would provide that gold package or something?
We have communications with the managing director, the owner, to say that once the website is finished and we're happy with it. We chose the gold package. But I don't think that's what they want to offer us. And actually, to be honest, the 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 length of time it's taken to get anything done. I'm glad Terry has put forward the fact that we look for other options as well because I feel, especially for Hazel, who's going to be managing the website day to day. She needs the confidence to have that technical support.
I I tend to agree with that. I think it's taken far too long to get the service up and running. Any other company would probably have the system in place by now and that is an issue.
Do you want to propose a motion to do that from the floor, please?
I can do that.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Andy? Chris, thank you. In favour? Well, since it's two on one, I think it's going to be a favor.
Search based word.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Another point, unless we've got any other comments first, another point about the website. We were going to have a SharePoint facility for councillors to access stuff within the website as an alternative to accessing stuff within the website. Where are we with that, please?
I can attest.
Thank you. I'm very glad you're here tonight.
What we did is we. I don't look at our shared working capabilities as as officers. We're not up to speed on SharePoint to the extent that we should be. So by the permission of this committee, I suggested that I'm in contact with the the original provider of our SharePoint. Can we have training gear for us so that we can use the topic? Because otherwise we go back to to what's happened on decisions, for example, we try educate everyone.
I was coming to that later.
We're not, we're not skilled enough. So I want to make sure that any of the managers can actually do what needs to be done. Because otherwise we're going to have this wonderful facility, we're going to have a hub for the councillors and they're going to be pulling it because we don't know how to actually put things onto it. So what we do is really, if you don't mind, there might be a document that we're going to have a SharePoint trading. I'm going to make sure that everything, that David, myself, Nick, Hazel and Karen, as committee cop. They are all going to be experts at doing SharePoint. We're experts. And I'm using that word pretty strongly. And then after that, we're in a position then to extend it to the councillors and make sure that we can give you the information that you need. If we foundry, you you casters will lose interest so quick because you're going to go over there and see no changes, for example, or wonder why it's not there. And we're going to be thundering ourselves because we want it with the document there. So if you don't mind, we have to, you know, we haven't learned from previous mistakes. We have to do it that way.
I think I think that's a very fair comment. Any comments on that?
I just think it's it's best way for this to actually train the staff in how to do things properly. They'll become more efficient over time because it's pointless to have a speak and span website and whole system. If it's redundant, nobody can use it. It's obvious. To me, it seems pretty, pretty obvious.
Sorry. When we do sort of get our stuff, can someone train me as well?
Yeah, I'm trying to say.
I'm useless on any of that.
And I'm happy to take part in the training if it's open to anybody.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the idea is that simply getting a whole lot of emails, you just open a basically an interweb. It's all there and then you choose what you want to see. But we have to put a bit of legislation.
That's what I'm going to be for.
And that's what we don't, I mean, I can't even have changed, we still have, we've had our transfer cover. We've had two photographs there for two years, three years. You know, and that's part of the thing that we have to learn to do. We have to use.
That's when we need more training.
And then and then and then at least as councillors, you don't have to, you know, it's like it's like a website. You don't have, you don't know how to operate a website. You just know how to, you know, press Google and and put in your email. And the SharePoint should just be like that, where you go on, there's a councillor folder and you can see what's new. Okay, someone posted something yesterday. That looks interesting. I'll have a look at it.
I don't. So my understanding of SharePoint, I've used in the past is it'll take you 10 minutes, people. Honestly, I'm an idiot, bro, because as I said before, I'm rubbish with it.
The other thing is you you'll probably just get an email to say documents uploaded. You won't have anything, you know, clogging up your emails. You'll go into SharePoint, it'll all be there, ready for you. All of these things will be there. So you won't get loads and loads of emails. You'll get a basic email to say V and N documents uploaded.
I've got to say, the 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 current system that you've got where you. We get two months' time, there's a meeting. And then now we get this one and it's got everything in it. I love that. Because trying to go in and out and in and out, that defeats me.
I think it's actually a better alternative possibly than the decision model that we were looking at. So, yeah.
I wouldn't need to do decisions training then. And can I just say, if I do get training, can I do face to face? Because I can't do it on there.
And that's what I've insisted. We're not going to do web training. We're going to get the guys down and they're going to physically sit there with a big screen and they're going to.
If it's a meeting or training and it's on there.
When I mentioned the training, it was not so much on the end user, it was more about uploading other files and actually putting stuff on the SharePoint. They should be that's open to anybody. I'm keen on doing it.
My knowledge, my knowledge of decisions and of SharePoint leads me to think that SharePoint will be a far easier alternative.
Possibly.
I think that's, is that reasonable? Thank you. Thanks. Seven eight one, weekly markets.
So the market coordinator just come back off holiday. He's had a, so I covered the markets for three Saturdays and two Tuesday markets. Which was good because it gave me the opportunity to have a chat with traders and catch up with where we are with with new traders. By and large, everybody seemed to be reasonably happy with the way things were going. We've looked to reconfigure the market and that's been going well since we've done that. We bought some new gazebo's. I see the market coordinator did some repairs on the old frame, so we've increased our stock by 100%. So that's good, leading into the summer months. One thing I would say is having the pre meeting with Terry a week ago. He reminded me about one of the tasks that was a set me in terms of trying to make the market cashless in terms of paying their fees. I think this is really important on on both counts. One is a safety thing for the market coordinator. But I think, you know, for the trader, once they get over the shock of actually having to do it. I think they'll find it a lot easier as well, rather than sometimes you go to traders and they're dipping in their pouch for their fees. It's only going to affect casual traders because the regular traders pay a month in advance anyway, and they usually do that by standing order and direct debit. And so, but we do need to give them warning. So what I would ask is for the committee, if they are in favour of action in that, is to make a decision that we do that. But I would ask that we do it from the fourth of May. As I say, it affects casual traders that pay market to market. So we don't have to do it on any specific date, but it gives us enough time to tell them that's what's going to happen and they understand it. And they, if they've got any concerns, they can come back to us with that. But it's something that we need to do from a safety aspect as well. So I don't know what councillors feel in terms of.
Well, yeah.
Just one comment really, and I I think the answer is going to be no. Is it likely that someone would say, oh, well, if you go cash out, card only, we're going to come?
Not on the trade. I don't know until we ask the question. That's why I would say that if we are going to initiate it, we'll do it from Saturday full to May. Because it gives us an opportunity to, from this Saturday. If the decision is made tonight, we can start talking to traders over the Saturday and the Tuesday because we have different traders on different days sometimes. And at least by the end of next week, we'll have a feel for if there's going to be anybody.
Me personally, I can't see there's a problem with it.
No.
No, I think it makes sense.
Yeah. My my issue is Stacey is about, what, five foot nothing and six stone really where.
Yeah.
She's such a target for somebody coming.
She should be running around with.
Lots of cash in a pocket.
The other, the other bonus for that is, I mean, when a, when a, when a casual trader turns up, they should pay their toll from the beginning. So once they get to their pitch, before they start setting up. What they will do is they will come to the little store, the little office, if you like, and then they. Tap their cards to pay for their fees. So again, it's within the confines of the beginning as well. So it's not in the middle of the market where you're flashing cards and things. So I think overall, it's just a more professional and safer method of paying.
I agree.
We are really interested.
Yeah, Chris, yeah, I mean, I'm not against this at all. What concerns me though is the fact I've heard horror stories from traders who say the fees charged by the card providers are extortionate.
We don't.
No, well, I mean. No, so so the.
I mean, the council.
No, so if someone, if someone's got, if someone's got three by three meter pitch and they they want one of our gazebo's, that fee is.
I think I think what you're talking about is.
The card machine.
Cashless operation, isn't it?
The machine provider itself, they charge a certain amount of money, don't they?
They do. I thought it was something like 0.5.
We pay.
We pay.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we pay fee. They don't pay at all.
No, that's.
I mean, what what you might be thinking of is when you buy a ticket to an event, sometimes you put an administration figure. That's that's the that's the platform.
Now, the cost is borne by the council. It is really quite small, isn't it?
It should be compared to markets. One of the tasks from the finance person up in the TV last time, because the action fans. Is we better go and just keep testing the market for that. So that's one of the things that we will be doing. There is some contract for our sheets at the moment.
Can we have a proposal for the floor for that then, I think? Thank you, Chris. Any favour? Shall we? Is it further on markets?
I haven't got anything. I don't know whether.
I I have got an issue, I'm afraid.
Sorry, there is one thing. Sorry, there is one thing. And it remind, it was it was good that we we took a decision to go and visit the corn hall. Because what I want to do is remind Terry that one of the things that we talked about a few months ago, and I was, we had a one to one with with Stacey earlier on. And you suggested that trying to, you know, look at good practice of other markets. And one of the markets that are flagged to us, quite rightly so, who are thriving at the moment, is Swaffham.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm quite, I'm quite happy to cover Stacey's market cuties if you were able to visit Swaffham.
I'll be very keen on that.
So again, I think, you know.
Presumably on a Friday.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And then I can cover her on a Saturday to cover her, you know, toy or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good, nice one. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, the issue I've had and and more than one trader has come to me with this is the. The duplication of goods on the market. Now, we have such a small market that broadly, we don't like market traders duplicating other traders' goods. And we we had issues, didn't we, last year with eggs and bread and all that sort of stuff? Now resolved because the guy who sold the eggs and bread has gone. I saw a Facebook post on Saturday of a person who has a stall in the market. I'm not going to, I'm not going to name names, who says, setting up in the market for all your needs of tea, incense sticks, bath flow burners, crystals and a wide selection of candles. All of those things were sold by other market traders. So I've, I'm a bit uncomfortable about it because what it feels to me is that a stall is come, a sort of. I should explain, the stall that that said this stuff is not a regular and is not even a semi regular. They're they're people who pop along from time to time. And it feels to me a bit unfair on the existing stall holders, one who comes every week, one who comes three out of four Saturdays. But they're getting bombed out whenever this person comes along. Now, I think we used to have something in regs that said you couldn't do that, didn't we?
We didn't have it as a written rule, Terry, but what but what we what we need to do.
So, okay, sorry. So I've had a look at the regs and there's nothing in there about it.
No.
We've got regs for that.
We have got market rules and regs, but but no. We either have to add that.
That's my view is that. I think we need to find a way of doing that. My concern is that what's going to happen. Is that the casual, casual one comes along now and again, and the two people who we want there, who I have to say are quite invested in the market. Just jack it in. So we get at best one stall fewer and one person coming along when they fancy it. I think we need to take an attitude towards protecting the other two stalls and that is about duplication. Chris, you're looking a bit funny.
That's the glasses, not. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I'm not. I thought competition was meant to be healthy.
Yeah. Yeah.
We you cope Swaffham and other markets, you go to Berry, I know which is totally different, you will find duplicates on there.
It's so much larger.
Yeah, I'm sure I'm aware of that. But I mean, if we want to grow the market considerably, are we putting a block in the way if storms come in?
Well, I think we're doing the reverse.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Yeah, I honestly think we do the reverse.
Yes, that's a fair one. Just by thought.
So again, not mentioning any traders, but can I just sort of so again, Chris has been on the council long enough to know that we've had these discussions before. The reason it's not in the regulations is because a regular trader has that kind of profile. But when you look at our regular traders, and we only have three at the moment, they do have pretty much one type of product. So the fishmonger, the fruit and veg, the plants and flowers. The thing with the fruit and veg, which is really interesting, is when that particular trader left and he didn't, you know, we had no bread. The fruit and veg came and said, on other markets, I sell bread. So I'm quite happy to step in and do that. But the second thing he said to me is, I will add that to the list of products that I have pledged to sell. So if we go down this route of non duplication, we must make sure that they record every product. Because in respect of those casual traders, they will add things all of the time. And in the end, it will have a detrimental effect because you will look at it and go, you know what, I could have a candle stall here. But that one sells candles, that one sells the odd one every now and again, and we can't have a candle stall. So we have to be very careful. It is a small space. In the past, councillors have said, no, competition is competition. And in the days where, you know, people go, oh, in the old days, we had a market on the down on the lower. We had three fruit and veg, we had two clothes stalls, we had two fishmongers. You know, one of which is still there, the other fruit and veg is still there. But we have to be careful because but Terry's right, we are not a berry. We're not huge where you can and we've not got the kind of football that can they're quite happy because they've got the volume. We haven't. But it's a very tricky thing to make a decision on. So I just I would err caution if you, you know, we have to be very strict with what their product list is.
Sort of trying to judge both sides of the argument. Obviously, you you got a new starter, they 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 want to come along and try it out. But if there's something else, then they can't.
Well, they're a bit hit and miss. They had the the new the new people had about four or five weeks before Christmas. We never saw anything of them after Christmas. And then they suddenly pop along on Saturday, saying they're selling all this stuff.
Yeah, yeah. But I think what what we what we need to do is look really carefully at what we do, like you're saying, look carefully at what we do. But then maybe task yourself and the market coordinator and maybe yourself to say, let's not concrete, but obviously if someone comes along and they've got a candle on the door and someone comes on with a store predominantly candles, you can't say, well, you can't tell them because they sell a candle. Because I mean, the the lady that sells brick and brack, who's been there for a long while.
She sells everything.
She sells everything.
Exactly.
And she'll she'll sell like a
Yeah.
reflective coat.
Yeah.
Oh, well, don't know that because he sells clothing.
I well, one thing I do.
I agree, you have to be careful. But it is something we need to look at because what we can't do is alienate the people that have stuck with us and we and we want them to come. We want them to expose others to come. So it is odd dodgy. It is hard. But maybe that's something that.
And that and that's the point I will I will accept from Terry that, I mean, both he and I know the traders we're talking about. And and what and what we don't want to do is lose two traders for someone that's going to going to attend once.
But maybe the wording could be.
But that but but I mean, to attend once every ev- once every four or five weeks is legitimate in terms of a casual trader. But if it means that we we lose two, we're we're back to square one. We've got nobody on the market again. So it's a dodgy one.
How about, and I think this might be a bit of a compromised position, you've already alluded to this. The permanent traders sort of say what they say, don't they?
They do, yeah. Yeah.
Why don't we say that that's for permanent traders and encourage the two stores to become permanent traders?
Well, funny you should say that because when I was covering, because again, we know who we're talking about. When I was covering Stacy, those two traders, Terry, did say to me, what are the options to go in regular? And I said, you can go in regular. In actual fact, you'll get a better rate. The problem that you've got is with regular traders, they commit to the month in advance. If you're prepared to do that, one thing you will have is a little bit more leeway in saying, that's what I sell. If if and this is why this is why we had a flower vendor two years ago that wanted to come along. And Simon went, no, no way. And because he'd been there, God knows how many years, 25 years, and he was a regular trader that comes rain or shine. There's no way we were going to compromise his attendance. So we have to say, sorry, we've already got one. That's why one of the first things Stacy and I will do when we get an inquiry is, what do you sell? I sell fruit and veg. When the fruit and veg came on a Tuesday, for a few weeks, and then it all went pear shaped, I had to ask Scott whether he was happy with it. And he said, fine, I don't come Tuesday, that's fine. But I had to ask him because he was a regular trader and they have completely different status. So that is a way forward if we can encourage them to be regulars.
And I I think the benefit of that is we're encouraging people to come with their traders on.
Yeah. And by and large, the two traders who we're talking about do commit. So I can't really, I can't really see why they wouldn't.
Yeah. So is the report? Yeah, go on, go on.
I I agree. So it's there's pros and cons with 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 the limiting how many trades of each type we can have in the market. So I can see this is, I agree, it's a tricky tricky decision.
It's not straightforward.
It's a sensitive decision because you can have pros and cons on both ends. I'm just wondering if we go down the the line of, you know, be exclusive, that we have one trade of each category or whatever it is. It's going to be really hard, I think Vic mentioned this, to define the type of product. Because some some people sell different types of products. And all of a sudden, they can just have a batch of stock that come in and sell something different within three time, four weeks, you know, four weeks from us down the line. And they can quickly change their stock type or the type the type of item. That's going to be quite onerous. I don't know, maybe on staff or market coordinator, whoever's going to sort of build those lists of what can be included and what what counts. And there's going to be a margin discretion there, but there's going to be also margin discretion for the traders to argue that, oh, well, I did say brick and brack, or I did say, and fruit includes tomatoes, tomatoes and the whole the whole thing. It's going to be a big discussion then.
One of the things I will say is, on the website, there's a list of traders who semi regularly or regularly come on the market. And one of the traders concerned, well, I'm sort of giving them away here really, aren't I? Has actually got written on their thing, crystals, which is exactly what this person was coming along to sell. So that 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 feels harsh. In terms of what you were saying, Vic, about the woman sells all the stuff, she's not a permanent trader.
She's not a permanent trader, but I think on every market you will get that kind of trader. And I think there is a tolerance from other other traders to because it's so big, it's something that will attract football. But what we need to be vigilant, and actually, the fact that we've recruited a dedicated market coordinator, her task is to make sure that she's vigilant in keeping that product list and actually scrutinising the traders as they set. Oh, hang on a minute, what's this? You know, now you're going to have to add that to the product list or, you know. So I think there's a little bit of work to be done on it, but.
How do we feel about putting it into the regs that permanent traders, because they do give a commitment to us, have the right to a a list of products that they.
Want to make exclusive to them because they're.
I I mean, you're not going to you're not going down to the level of, say, I I I mean, we've got to be fair, isn't it? You can't say earrings or something like that because.
Yes, of course.
But a a sort of.
I tackle products, I would say.
How do we feel about that?
I fingers crossed there's no arguments in the.
I think it's difficult.
I think it's hard.
Well.
They want you to come and trade. But if you sell one of the things that these don't, then you're off, you're on.
No, I I don't think it I don't think it would be that stringent.
So there's got to be a little bit of flexibility in it. But the problem, I think the idea of, well, look, hang on, we've got fruit now coming and it wants to come on a Tuesday. And we said to the other one, exactly that. Well, worse is the objective.
Yeah.
And we do need, the one thing we do need is to get more on there because the more we get on there, the better the football.
My my reservation is, a- as I said, you get people in here knocking others off, you get fewer people.
Yeah, and and this is what this is what I'm thinking of. If you've got seven sort of veg stalls.
If it becomes a cutthroat thing.
Yeah.
Then we lose.
Yeah.
It's not worth getting seven traders on there and all fruit and veg. I can't just keep them going for seven for seven lots of fruit and veg.
I've had that conversation.
And it's having a palate. It is.
I think.
It's judging, isn't it?
I think we can have the guideline, but yeah, have a degree of flexibility into it. And if if in that case, should any argument or I don't worry arise from that between the between traders new and old.
Essentially.
The owners will be on the term market coordinator to try to mediate and negotiate their way retain the both possibly, or at least the oldest ones, the regular ones. But, you know, that's something they're going to have to sort of.
But equally, what we can't have is our regular traders dictating what we can and what we can't have on the market. They're traders, they're not running the market.
Interestingly, at Swaffham, the traders do run the market on Saturdays. Not sure that's a model I'd go for, but their council committee at Swaffham consists entirely of traders. It's got to be over there.
It'd be worth for you guys to, you know, maybe you could attend as a guest to one of them meetings and see how, you know, how they deal with on a daily business, how they navigate those arguments and those challenges.
There's one more thing that comes up on the market. It's called that. I want to ask about is the obviously the food vendor. We haven't got a food vendor yet. And obviously, not not there.
Before we get to that, before we get to that one, Vic, can we sort this one out?
Refreshments. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's all right. It's all right.
No, no, don't you know.
Could I could I propose that we that we put something in the rules around? And I I think this is a thing we need to have a chat about, put something in the rules that permanent traders get to get an option.
Yeah, permanent, so regular traders have exclusive product protection, so non dup.
Yeah.
I think that, but to be fair, the commitment they give, I think that is fair. I think we have to be very careful in terms of casual traders.
Yeah.
But again, we need to be vigilant on the product list and that's where negotiation can start from. If they've got it black and white, you can go, well, hang on a minute, last week you didn't have that. That's why she's unhappy or he's unhappy. So I think that helps Stacy. But I think, I don't think it would be detrimental, Vic, if we had that written into our regular traders.
That's fine. Could you read that? I didn't quite catch.
So a regular trader who gives that commitment to come rain or shine, I think they should have an exclusive product protection, so non duplication. So we couldn't have another fruit and veg on there. We couldn't have another fishmonger. You know.
But that doesn't apply to Tuesdays, just in case, because.
No, unless they went.
It doesn't. It doesn't apply across days, if you know what I mean.
Okay. I've got a picture of that one.
Thank you.
And that put forward as a proposal?
Yeah.
Yes, put forward as a proposal.
Thank you. That's carried. Thank you. Thank you very much. I I think that's a reasonable sort of compromise.
It's a compromise. So I think, oh, fingers crossed it'll work.
Vic. Hot food offering.
Yeah. But I mean, we will see. Can we not say, at the very least, can we not get someone to go and take coffee or something?
So so good news.
Yes, yes, it is.
Finally.
So the lady who attends Tuesday market with that lovely, you practice the pictures on your
Daisy.
Through Daisy, she is desperate to come on Saturday. And I spoke to her yesterday and said, if you're desperate, I'm desperate to have you. So let's get you on. The there is an issue that was, I think, was broached with her that that and she said, give it what happens if you ever open the tea room? And are you going to kick me off? Because I want to make this, I want to make a commitment to it. I want to build my client base and all the rest of it. And I've said, to be honest, it may be that we might have to look for a different space on the space because it's a different configuration to Saturday. You've got plants, you've got fruit and veg, you've got Mandy with a big stall there. She's in that corner on a Tuesday. So ideally, you would think she would be up this end on a on a Saturday where there's the gap. But if we did do that kind of thing, and I've said, if we ever open that facility again, there's a different way that we're going to do it. So I don't see that as a compromise. There was a conversation we had after that. I don't want to get into too much. And I don't want to say, I'll talk to to Terry and whoever a councillor wants to know afterwards. But there was a really very good conversation to have. So I've encouraged her to come on Saturday as well. And she sells good coffee as well. It's not just like a hot water or a bit.
I second that.
It it it's good stuff.
It's proper coffee.
Whether we encourage her to get into some sort of like, you know, whatever, sandwiches and things like that as well or whatever. But I mean, she's got a lovely lovely stall. So so that's good news. She will be starting on Saturday.
The only slight issue I have with that is she does sell cakes that are awfully light puddings.
And that's.
And she's aware of that as well.
Jess is very supportive.
Although she's very reasonable, Jess, and we are working with Jess and and, you know, we're getting her involved in all food, the foodie Friday time as well. So we're building a relationship with Jess that's getting better and better. But but good news. So at least it's a at least it's teas and coffees, at least it's refreshments, but we still want that hot food option as well. But that might attract them. It's a start. It's a start.
It's better than nothing for sure.
And it's not. It's not a it's a nice fan. It's a nice.
And she's very, I'm sort of over egging this a bit, but she's she's very cagey, very amiable. The sort of person we want on there. Can I say that?
If you want.
Yeah.
You already have it.
Yeah. I think we're done with that, aren't we, markets now? Seven eight two financial report. Thank you.
So. Yeah, so I think I'll 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 put some of the some of the points in the earlier venues report. And as you can see i- in the report, you know, bar income, actually, this this line.
Thirty percent is the seven and two.
I hope I can say.
Seven eight two financial report. Did I say seven eight three? Oh, jeez.
Sure. All right. Okay, yeah, I'm with you.
I'll be right. Okay, I've got. Okay, I've got. I mean, it's 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 obviously transposed on on these ones. This this is the one I got I got home. So, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, seven eight two.
Help and safety. So yeah, just to give you, I mean, Gildol Towers repairs, councillor have made the decision and approved the repairs. And and Nick, Nick is underway with negotiating the start date, etc. So hopefully, we can see a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel in that respect. The other one that has also been approved is Gildor Heating. They are starting the works on Friday in terms of the the heating contractor. So they'll be starting flushing out the system, the old system and and the install of pipe work and boiler. I've had several meetings with the suppliers, cadant, SSE appointed cadant, the local contractor to provide that service up to the point of the meter. Again, I did, I think, my God, we're getting into a another tower situation. Because as we did with the electrics on the market, you have a survey team come out, you have a, you know, someone else comes out and then the dig team comes out. But actually, having said all of that, when they have come out and they've, you know, they've investigated, they've invested a lot of time to try and get the next team to be on the case. And we're far enough down the road that they've actually scheduled to dovetail with the heating contractor that supply. And we're far enough down the road that they've actually scheduled to dovetail with the heating contractor, um, that supply. So, such a word, I think everything at this moment in time is looking good to go, pretty much in, um, in, in a few weeks' time. The contractor says it's going to take two or three weeks to get him, uh, up to speed, but I think by then. So, yes, I know we're going into the hot weather, we probably don't need heating at that point, but we're not going to get caught cold when, when it changes again later in the year. So we've made some good progress on that.
Can we double check that when Cadant or Cadant, have they not, has finished the work, that they, we make sure they really tidy up behind it? We've had major issues on other pieces of work they've done in the town, where they've left holes in the ground, holes in the pavement. It's some pieces, the work they didn't done it away, they've left a hole, and there's some ground on the road, they've left all the sand and that all over the road. We need to make sure when they're finished that they're tidying up properly.
Well, if it does, it's on my head, because I am the contact, and when they come, they report to me. The fact is that I am literally on the doorstep of the site. The problem is, again, Chris, is as, as, as we found out with the, with the electrics upon the market, there will be a, I don't know what you call them, a make-good team. You know, the dig team will just, I mean, you can see they've done the exploratory holes, and they've just mounted it up over the top, because they've got to come back, to be fair, to, to finish the job. But that's how that team will leave it, and then the next one will come in and make good, because it's crazy, no wonder, you know, these things cost so much money. But, um, but, yeah, so I'll make sure I'm on it in terms of that.
Thank you.
It's going to go across the, the supply is actually going to go across the forecourt of Dad's Army, so we can't leave it in that kind of state anyway. Because that's access to the Dad's Army museum.
Thank you.
That's Chris. Um, just a little thing for myself, David.
Yeah.
Um, this is just chicken off an action point, really, steps, I love the answers.
So the bank, uh, Carnegie, so, um, they are complete, I did see, I did see that, so, um, prompted by itself, to be fair, Hazel did the post to say that, you know, we've done it, it's over, I think they look really good, even though one, um, one social media contributor said, you could have repainted the, you know. Well, we will when the weather, you know, allows us to do that, but we will, because, um, she's right in one respect, but blimey, you know. One of the other things to talk about good weather jobs is, we have talked about, you, you brought it up in our pre-media, the cracks in the building need to be, uh, raped and re-pointed.
In the Guildhall.
In the Guildhall, on the, on the, uh, on the external face, again, we have to wait until the weather's conducive to that kind of, of, but it will happen as soon as it changes. And we can guarantee that once we do point it, it's going to go off before it freezes. So, um, yeah, so those kind of projects are on, on, on going.
Thank you. Dare I say, seven eight, yeah. Financial report.
So I've touched on several areas, but one of the ones I will highlight is some positives and some negatives, unfortunately, but, um, but, so bar income, the last quarter is, um, is actually trying to drag back some of the shortfalls that we've had through the year in, for a lack of bar events. Um, I don't think we're gonna, there's going to be a variance, but again, there's, there's a big event this weekend, which will, uh, add, uh, a gross income, hopefully, you know, well over the two thousand pound. We have a monthly target, a gross target of three thousand, three hundred pounds to hit, to hit our budget target. Um, and the last couple of months, we've, we've been four thousand plus. So if we'd have done that through the year, we would have been, you know, a good ten grand up, rather than the negative variant. So the potential is there, and as I mentioned earlier, some of the analysis and forward planning we're doing, hopefully, um, we will, we will have more positives than, um, than, than negative stories to, to generate income in the future, because we're, we're doing the analysis a lot, a lot more keener. Carnegie Room Hire again, that's something that we're, um, we're getting more and more inquiries. We did talk about blood donors taking additional session, uh, sessions, we're going to get into the summer period where we've got several weddings and wedding receptions booked, which are always, uh, good hires and good earners. And again, there's lots of tribute ban, there's so many tribute ban inquiries that we're having, again, we've got to do the analysis of, do we want to be, do we want to have a whole programme of those, we need to be sensible about it, um, as we were, every programme of activities and events, we're actually pushing them off until twenty twenty five. And they're quite happy to do that, because they can just put it in their twenty twenty five schedule, um, touring programme, which is really encouraging that we've not put them off, but they'll come back next year. So again, what we're doing is, if we've got a Queen tribute, we're not going to take another one within that year, because again, it dilutes, uh, the success of both events. If they know that there's too many, a bit like duplication, market trading, same principle, really. But where the negative does come is the, is the obvious one, the one that really flags on our budget, and that's, uh, the Carnegie repairs and maintenance. It's hugely over budget, however, as I said in my report, if you look at the, um, if you look at the entry above that, that, that is running at two thousand four hundred and something, and the budget is figured as two thousand five hundred. Because we always assumed in this area that we would be looking at minor type repairs, so if we had to repair a toilet seat or some basic painting and things, what we've been hit with, as you all know, sitting on other committees that have discussed this, is the, um, increase in fire risk assessment, uh, repairs and jobs and things like that. And it has to be set somewhere, but it's been set against the budget, which wasn't unfortunately forecast. So it's nothing we can do about it, I'm afraid, um, apart from trying to generate as much money as we could have done to try and, um, pay that in some ways, but, yeah, it's too late to, or, or the fact that it is a huge amount, but that's, that's a mitigation about another one. So I don't know whether you've got any questions on the financial report outside.
Um, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm looking at you all and I'm saying no. Thank you very much. On to item seven eight four, application to hire the venue free of charge.
So this is something that, um, so the second job centre, uh, telephoned me, um, pretty much, uh, a week or so ago, so they were very lucky to get on to this agenda. But what they want to do is deliver a jobs fair called Setford on Wednesday, the eighth of May. They'll be in from, uh, I think nine o'clock to three o'clock, uh, and it is a Wednesday, so it's our weekday rate. Uh, and for them, they would have a concession rate if they paid for it, so it would be twenty pounds for a concession rate midweek. So that's six hours, so that's a hundred and twenty pound value of hire. So there's me getting excited that he's going to have a six hour booking, and then he tells me that they haven't got a budget for this, but they, they, they really want to do this to benefit, um, the job seekers within the town. And the Carnegie is a big essential venue. We've, we've, um, we've facilitated jobs fairs before, um, it's disappointing that they haven't got a budget, uh, for these kind of events, if that's what they do. But I said I would bring it to committee, I have to do that as part of our terms of conditions of committee, you have to make the decision on that. The value is a hundred and twenty pounds that would be given away, caveat it against, it is, um, to try and find people, jobs. So, uh, is it something that we want to do?
Yeah. Um, my understanding of a jobs fair is companies like, uh, they've got vacancies, want employers, they go to the job centre and they say, well, let's put on a job fair, and, and they pick up them, people to cover their vacancies.
Yeah.
So we're basically saying, I mean, I've got no problem with, with saying, it's a worthy thing, and, yeah, maybe we shouldn't be charging the job centre. But the main beneficiary of giving them the venue free of charge isn't the job centre. Yes, it is residents that might pick up a job, but it's the companies, like your two sisters, like, um, somebody other big employers in, in the town, that will go there and encourage people to go and work for them, care providers, they'll be picking up the staff. So surely, they should be paying to attend the Department of Work and Transport, uh, Penitence Job Fair.
Well, possibly, but I can't, I can't dictate that format to the job centre, Vic. But we have done it before, and you're right, Two Sisters will be there, people like Centre Parks have been there before, Baxter's, all the big hitters, as well as, um, some of the smaller events. The reason they have that is because it gives, it gives those, those employers the opportunity to sit down and have a pre-interview, if you like. So, you know, they can actually cherry pick those kind of people that they want to invite into a formal interview. It has worked in the past, there's, you know, the feedback that we've had is, is been very successful, that format, but it just means that we have to forego.
Hundred and twenty quid.
A hundred and twenty quid and a six hour hire that we could, we could get from someone else who will pay. Having said that, we are a town council.
Two questions, and one, likelihood of getting someone for that Wednesday?
At this late stage, because it is the eighth of May.
Probably won't happen, will it?
No.
So it'd be empty if we don't allow it.
During the day it will, we, it doesn't, it doesn't impact our regular hire in the evening and Wednesday.
Secondly, if we was to agree as a council to say, okay, we'll give you that for free, can we not say that is our event, we're welcoming the Department of Work and Painters in for a job fair from the council? And sort of play as our event, not, not the.
So you want sort of a dual, um, a dual promotion?
If we're paying for it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we, I, I can, yeah, I will certainly convey that back and say that, yeah, we want recognition that we're supporting it. Uh, so, so, um, what, what we could also do, uh, um, is, you know, we could, we could have a, a table there, we could say that we want to, you know, promote. I know there's jobs that we're looking to advertise at the moment, certainly in the, uh, in the town team and things. So maybe we have an opportunity to, you know, to, to talk and connect, yeah.
My, my point is, sorry, I'll keep, my point is, if, if we're going to do these things, yeah, and we're going to have to take all the kudos.
Yeah.
Like, oh, what the council done? Well, actually, we, we paid for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Carla.
I have a problem with both options. Yeah, well, in first place, I know we have the business rates and that we have the rate, uh, a special rate for charities and groups, which is a reduced rate. And assuming this where the job centre would fit in with a special rate then that you mentioned. It's also a bit baffling to me that the government themselves, or the D W P, can't afford a hundred and twenty pounds to promote work in a, in a town where that is the most, one of the most needed things, and always promoting employment, especially with youngsters there, so it'd be great to be unemployed in town. So I'm all in favour of promoting the jobs, and it's one of some things I keep beating the drum about, employment for the town, improving economics, getting young people into jobs, all for it. The fact they can't afford a hundred and twenty pounds doesn't sit very well with me, particularly when we're charging charities and small groups that sometimes don't have that in a full month, if they want to use the, the space. So why are they more important, just because they're bigger, why should we give away with free to the government? We can certainly afford it.
Yeah.
In order to give it to the other groups, we, we creating, we creating a precedent there where we're favouring the institutions over the small guy.
Well, I, I would actually, I would, I'll give you an example to support your view. Yesterday, and Terry was there, so he knows.
Enable.
Enable, a wellbeing, had thirty odd, um, organisations that are promoting all the good things that they do. They paid a hundred and forty pounds to hire our venue, and they've been massively good stuff for the town, hugely well attended. So, so they were chuffed a bit, it worked.
And we can't put it on the scale, the value of people's employment versus their mental health, because they're interlinked, they both have value when, when it comes to that. And, I mean, I'm sure that group, whatever, I'm not familiar with, but I'm pretty sure they weren't the D W P, they weren't the government paying for it. Um, there is also a point, I think, the companies that are there, yes, they're going to get the workers. I'm sure the local agencies have something to do, to say about that, because if they can't afford a hundred and twenty pounds to recruit the best workers possible, but they were keen to spend thousands of pounds going to agencies when they're desperate, I'm pretty sure they can afford a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and twenty.
The last time we did a jobs fair.
If you want a job fair with the D W P.
The last time we did a jobs fair, there was representation from twenty organisations, so.
You figure, but if, if you figure if every company put in a fiver.
Yeah, yeah.
They would have covered the thing to the council.
Chris.
How many members of staff it's going to cost us during the day? Just.
Because no.
Two, three.
Okay, are we going to sell tea and coffee?
Uh, we can do, so we.
Try and bring some money back, but far more importantly, right, if a group like Enable is prepared to pay, and with hard-earned residents' money, who are the least able to afford this, because they're mainly elderly, disabled, which you're looking at, so people, why on earth are we giving a government body free?
A hundred and twenty pounds.
Government around the table, I'm, I'm sensing.
And one more point, even if we do sell those coffees and teas, do bear in mind that the footfall is from people that is unemployed.
Yeah, exactly, exactly correct, um, we, we, we're, um, we're looking the same now.
I would, I would be sorry.
I can't agree with that, I think, I think that's favourite case.
If everyone had said, oh, we'll do it, I'd say, well, then the caveat's got to be that we're, we're the number one promoter.
I don't even know why they get a special rate, they're not a charity. That for starters, to be offensive.
Even if it isn't the government.
I know.
The people that are attending, they're more than an organisation.
Companies can't afford six quid each, that's a pretty poor show.
You're like, you're like recruitment agencies in there, and they're probably the richest of the lot.
So who's going to propose in second?
There's no, absolutely not.
Proposal.
Chris second.
Happy to welcome them, but they've paid the fee.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
That's interesting.
So a nice healthy discussion that was.
I'm, I'm mindful of time, correct? Seven eight five, action points complete.
So I'll come, listen through these, so, um, so, uh, one of the action points was that officers organise a journalist, guest reporter and contact schools. This is something that we did discuss, that, um, and wanted to do as a, as a, uh, an extension of the writers' group that was, um, delivered from the Guildhall for, um, and it was really successful, that programme's still ongoing for adults, we wanted a junior version. However, it has transpired since those discussions that the schools programme has just been over. But for the schools themselves. Monday, was it, Tuesday, um, Drake and Redcastle, and the, the guys have been, um, they had two school visits today, they've got another one tomorrow. So I think we're just overwhelming the teachers, it's something that we really want to do, but you're just going to have to just go with it for a bit. But it's not something, we're all keen on doing it, and I think there's a lot of kudos that we can get from that, um, but it's going to be ongoing, so I think you need to carry that one forward.
Yeah.
Um, in, so, um, the next one was that, uh, the committee officers speak to staff and ask them to provide personal photos for the website. Uh, again, I don't know whether this was discussed in personnel at all, Alan.
No, but I, at four o'clock this afternoon, I received an email from our HR consultants, basically saying that we cannot call staff, uh, to, to do that, stop them, they're allowed to control their own. We have to be specific about.
But what I can say is on the website, as you can see, um, so if someone, so if someone wants to make contact and complain about anything or, or, or question anything, what is on the website is, um, Alan, Nick and myself in terms of, um, uh, the, the, the management level. We have photographs, we have, uh, name, job title and job description. Every other staff member is on there with exactly the same information, so job title, a brief job description of what, so people could get, oh, I've got a complaint about the cemetery or whatever, I need to go to this person, because, look, it says that that's what they do, and here's the contact details. The only thing that's missing is the photo. However, um, slightly ironically, uh, we, we are, um, putting together the lanyards, and not one staff member has refused to have their photo on here, so.
Can I just say, we were told we had to have photos on them?
Well, well, you've put it on, you've put it on.
Yeah, but we were told we had to have them on, so that's fine.
You're happy to put it on, so people have subscribed to that, I mean, you know, no one has come to me and said, oh, my dead body, you're not having it on there. But the thing is, um, so I don't, I don't think they're, they're, they're trying to hide from their identity, but the website goes further afield, you know. You know, this is if someone's working at their job, they're quite happy to display the photo and this. And I think that's a good compromise, in my opinion. But, um, but that's where we're at. So they will be implemented very soon.
I, I don't think we can force staff to have their pictures on the website. We should not even consider doing it. The senior management team definitely, because they're, they're, they're responsibility. That's why they get paid the extra money. The lanyards are not publicity for identification.
Yeah.
And safety. So we know who's whom coming into the building, et cetera, et cetera. Right. But they should not be forced to have their pictures on the website if they don't like.
The issue with lanyards, I think it's pertinent regarding the stuff we've had, the consultation with the Abbey Estate. Lots of people will be going in, uh, residents will be going in, talking to, uh, flagship officials. They haven't got lanyards, they don't know who they're talking to. So I think it's reasonable to have a name.
I don't disagree with that by the way.
Um, so they're just being finished. Uh, alone has taken that project on. So from, uh, the outside of Easter, so, uh, the second of April, um, people would be wearing these. What we're also doing is, um, so a visitor, a contractor, et cetera, would sign into the Carnegie and they would have to wear one of these as well, because there's times when we obviously have hires in and contractors might be working in a different area that doesn't affect that. But they walk through the communal area, so they need to identify themselves, especially when blood donors and things like that are on. And then we will have one with councillors. The only thing is, we are going to get, um, the, the this bit, the, the strap with councillor on it as well. So you differentiate staff and councillor. We obviously can't do that with this.
Be nice.
Yeah. So it will be like that, but it will be a lanyard here with councillor on it. So, yeah.
Can you make it so they're snap free?
It has to be Chris because there's a safety thing, especially in, yeah.
Just a small question.
Go on.
Very quick question. I mean, can we, we just provide you guys with a picture? Before you do those cards, we can put a new picture in it, because the picture I had from five years ago was probably the most idiotic picture that was taken of me of all time. I cannot. And it's one that is on the website. I mean, just, it's not the one you guys, it's just, it's just a formal, you know, word.
Next time you pop in, just pop in and.
Anything else, but whatever's there.
I've sent them the favourite one in.
I appreciate it.
It's not going to make things.
Oh, gosh.
Um.
It was idiot.
I, I, I agree with the ID, the lanyards and all that. But can we, it might not be for this committee, but can we explain it slightly?
So I'm going to come on to this. Carry on.
The, the lapel badges, the magnetic ones. Fethertown Council, can we get them?
We have got those. So if you want those, because I must admit, when you go into receptions and things like that, these are a bit cumbersome.
Yeah, especially, I mean, you do attend the old.
We, so there, we've already got those, so it's not going to cost extra. So what we'll do is we'll supply one of these if you were coming to say the Enable Wellbeing Fair or something like that. But if you're attending Chris's civic perception in a few months' time.
The second one, um, is, yeah, it sounds a bit naff, but business cards.
I was, I was coming to that.
When we, when we're on the bat, right, now, I, I'll give you an example. I was now just the other day, I was talking to a woman on the till and she said to me, what? I said, well, I'm local councillor. How are you? She started, I said, I couldn't have a conversation with her because it was acute. It'd be really nice if we've got just a couple in our pocket and go, look, contact me or any other councillor, just, that's the contact details. Because that way, we're more accountable to them. We can get stuff, we can come and ask you questions, because people will come directly to us rather than phoning up you and going, uh, what about this? What about that?
So I'm going to add another one now. So, well, thank, thanks, Vic. I, I, I was, I was going to suggest that anyway. So thank you. Um, I pay for my own.
I'm willing to pay for it.
I'm happy to pay for one.
Another one would be the magnetic badges for councillors.
Yeah.
In case they're in situations where a lanyard might not be as safe as it would be.
Yeah.
If we can lump all that lot into, into one action plan.
So I'm, I'm willing to.
We just wanted to get the, to, to get approved. So I think it is something, some agendas, I don't, the plans, the, I'd be sitting in the meetings. The business cards, we just need to put those on the agenda somewhere. So we'll just, we'll get that.
The, the magnetic, um, government start, we've already.
We're on that agenda. Business cards, I think it has to be approved. So we'll just.
Is it easier for you in terms of admin to split these out or have it all in one item?
I, I think we've had the discussion, because I think it's, it's unfortunate, it's one of these things, it's torn between different committees. So we just get back to the committee and, uh, we'll do that shortly. Uh, it's just actually going to put this down quickly.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry, Carla, Carla, I beg your pardon.
Oh, wait. Go on.
Go on, Carla, you go first.
I was just going to ask, is it more cost efficient even for the council if you put it all in one package? When you order like from a supplier that there's all these sort of, uh, things, it might be more efficient and, and get a better deal because you, you're buying a package of items, maybe? I don't know. Is something worth looking to?
Yeah.
Could I have one that says Mary, in case anyone doesn't know, I am in a rush. Sorry for your distress.
No, so we're drilling down into the big issues.
Uh, and then the last one on this one is there was two, two aspects of, uh, the weekly markets. One was, uh, the committee officers purchased five replacement gazebos, uh, no more than five hundred and fifty pounds. Actually, we have done, they came in at three oh seven. So that was a savings.
And they were red and white.
They're red and white. Yeah. Do you know what? It didn't dawn on me. I guess, oh, do you know what? It's a nice colour for summer. And it has, uh, it's called Aurora on social media. But do you know what? Sometimes that's a good thing because it gets it out there. So, um, so I'm happy with that.
No such thing as bad publicity.
Uh, can I just, a response to that? If we was going one side, it would have been all red or all white.
The, yeah, the only thing is, when we, when we do the summer stuff, that, that, I don't know, that's what my opinion was. The other, the other reason is because our old gazebos used to be green and red, solid green and red. So again, me being mindful of budgets and things, we, we replaced the cabinet, uh, the canopy, but we also had red sides. So it, it didn't look out of place. If we'd have got a completely different colour, it would have been stupid. So it was my decision. I'm sorry to upset some members of the public, but there you go.
I hope.
Well, you don't sound so in control.
No. Uh, so the market coordinator, uh, set up a Twitter account, which Hazel has already alluded to. She's done. I've already started, so we'll get that underway. And so.
Very quickly, I've got two little things. Um, one's, we've sort of covered very well where it's going, is regarding, um, team decisions. That's now been, isn't it?
That's, it's been put in hold.
Yeah, okay. That is, that is, that is different. Um.
There's been no, sorry, excuse me. There's, there's been no formal decision on it. I, I just had a chance to some, to, to the plans of business. Now, we were driving decisions and we actually said we're putting it in hold. Uh, and the reasons why we're putting it in hold.
Okay. So there's no need for that to go as an action plan. Vic, can.
Just, um, with the British Leagues Club, I know it's part of the venues and, and, but we don't hear nothing of it. I, I know that they've renewed their licence, but the last I heard it was shutting down. Do, can we sort of get, because we obviously hire stuff out, right? We've got venues that we hire out. And we've got the, um, Chambles stuff as well. Uh, we never get reports on where they're going. We, we just, they're so empty. And we don't know what's going on with them. And as it's a venues, I thought that might be under this.
So that's not under this committee.
So, so, sorry, Alan, Alan.
It's just, it's, it's pulled under finance. Uh, a few years ago, the Toronto Reference of the Finance Committee was to look after the commercial leases, not treat it as a venue. It used to actually be all that was, was part of amenities. So it's actually moved it to finance for the reason that.
Excuse my ignorance.
No, it's fine. It's in the Toronto Reference of Finance.
It's fine, that's all right.
I've got two final small ones, and I think we, we know where we are. One's the Guildhall windows and walls, which we've spoken about.
Yeah. So again, they're being assessed at the moment. So hopefully we can get some quotes.
And the other one's the max for kids.
And, uh, so as soon as we have our first outdoor activity, uh, which will be one of the, um, Friday evenings, we have the music from the middle of the Shambles in that cage area, we have it up and out of it from there, which gives us the opportunity to unveil our five metre by five metre slates and ladders for the kids to.
Brilliant.
Go and play on. So that's our first one. Um, we, we might have another one, um, that we can have. When we don't have it on top of that, it pulls over the staging area. If we were to open the sandpit, for instance, we can then take it out and just lay it on the ground. And so it's going to be useful. We're going to use it, um, throughout the summer. It's going to get good use.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Sorry, Chief, can we exceed about your limit?
Yeah, we, we have.
Would you like to suspend standing order three bits? I think it is.
Yes, I think you're right. And, uh, and move on quickly. Um, yes, all in favour of suspending standing order.
Yes, go, let's get on with it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's agreed. Um, seven, eight, six, uh, community engagement. Have we got anything there?
Uh, trying to think what we're discussing, to be honest. Um, no, I don't.
No, I don't think we have either. Um, thank you. And seven, eight, seven, committee officers. No, beautiful. Um, that's it then. I, I declare the meeting closed. So, so for all of two minutes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and thanks, thanks, everyone. I think we got through a lot of stuff there.